Hey, it's Stephen. Um, you were correct. The, uh, that was, there was confusion, all right? So we're trying to stretch from that. So, yes, the condition is also, is that over?
No, we're gonna have a correction.
Okay, okay, okay.
That's a typo, he's gonna, I'll say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah.
Anything, you good?
I'm, uh, I'm, as today's my head of meeting before. Okay, it is 7:01 PM. I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 7:01 PM. I appear to be here. Are we, can we call the roll, please?
Commissioner Van Galen is absent. Commissioner Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Black?
Present.
Vice Chair Carter?
Present.
Chairman Te?
Not present.
Thank you, we have four commissioners present.
All right, um, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get too far into the agenda, um, I received, and I think the whole commission did, an email from the applicant on PH1, um, asking to continue this, because I guess their team is not entirely ready today. Um, we would need a motion to do that, and what would be the next available date?
November 12th.
Okay, um, can I get a motion to continue PH1 to November 12th?
Who moved? Sorry, it's not.
I haven't seen anything on my screen. Um, well, I'll move. Is anybody else going to second the motion to continue?
I'll second.
Thank you, moved by Chairman Te, second by Commissioner Black. Please vote.
Well, this is the original item.
It says, it says motion adjourned, right?
Oh, I'll change it to continue, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, motion to continue passes with four i's.
Okay, so if anybody was here on PH1, we'll be taking this up on November 12th. Um, so with that being done, let's move into public comment for items on the agenda. Do we have any public comment for items on the agenda?
Yes, we have two speakers registered.
Uh, three minutes each.
Our two speakers are Jay Dadwell and Judy Sherman. Jay Dadwell? He is not here and he did not register to speak. Our next speaker is Judy Sherman. Judy, can you hear us? She's not responding, I can circle back at the end.
All right, well, she may want to speak on PH2 at any rate.
I'm here now.
All right, let's go.
Oh, good, good evening, uh, members of the Planning Commission. Um, I'm from, Judy Sherman from Fox Hills. At the last presentation of the specific plan for Fox Hills, the consultant said that the Planning Commission had stated their conserve, concerns for preserving in place the mature trees in Fox Hills. Either this commission gave you, gave her misinformation, or there was a miscommunication, because you clearly do not care if mature, mature trees are preserved in Fox Hills, as you approve the 5700 Hanum project where the mature trees will be removed at that project's large location. Please clarify with the consultant and give your honest view, based on the fact that you approved the above-mentioned project despite the removal of the mature trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the end of our speakers.
All right, and I know we've received some correspondence. Um, may I have a motion for receipt and filing correspondence, please?
Thanks, who motioned, it's not picking up on my.
Moved by Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, and second?
I second.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Vice Chair Carter. Please vote. Thank you, motion passes with four i's.
Okay, and consent calendar, um, approval of draft commission meeting minutes of August 27, 25 to 5. Any comments or additions from commissioners? Right, um, any public comment on this item?
Sorry?
Any public comment on this item?
Oh, no.
All right, uh, so may I have a motion to approve consent?
Thank you, moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Chairman Te. Please vote. Thank you, motion passes with four i's.
It does say motion adjourned every time it comes up, that maybe just.
I, I changed it up at the end.
Okay, good enough.
It's the default that comes up, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, moving on to item PH2, it's a public hearing for approval of a California Environmental Quality Act checklist pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section 15, 168, 1618, determining that the environmental effects of the operation are within the scope of the Culver City General Plan 2045 and Zone Code Update Certified Programmatic Environmental Impact Report. And number two, consideration of a site plan review tentative track map recreational facilities credit and extended construction hours, uh, P 2025-0050-SPR/TTM, to allow the development of a mixed-use project with 846 residential units and 11,406 square feet of commercial space on a site located at 16, 6201 to 6299 Bristol Parkway. So I guess we'll start with, uh, presentation from staff, please. Mr. Chaco.
Can you hear me? Yes, great. I'm Pierre Chaco, Senior Planner with Current Planning, and I'm the project manager for this item PH2 on your agenda. The proposed project is a six-to-eight-story mixed-use project on roughly seven-acre site in mixed-use, high-density zoning. This is the former Fox Hills Plaza site, and the proposal is to demolish the existing commercial structures and improvements on the property, and replace it with 846 units, including 36 very-low-income units, as well as roughly 11,400 square feet of community-serving retail. The project is seeking density and other bonus incentives, and these have been administratively approved pursuant to state density bonus and, uh, and the Culver City Municipal Code. This includes granting of five waivers, including a height increase from sixty, 56 feet to 94 feet, a reduction in setback of, from 10 feet to 5 feet along the Green Valley Circle frontage, the location and screening requirements for above-ground utilities and loading areas in the front yard, and lastly, the retaining walls separation and height requirements. As you can see from the table at the bottom of the slide, the permitted density on the site, which is 100 dwelling units per acre, computes to 705 units on this site. 5% of these units are being reserved for, for, uh, very-low-income units, that's 36 units, and this, uh, makes them eligible for a 20% bonus of 141 units totaling 846. To the, to the west and south of the site are two existing hotels, um, the one to the west is eight stories, the one to the south is 12 stories, to the northwest is Westfield Shopping Center, and to, directly to the north across Green Valley Circle is a three-story office building, a four-story office building. Across, uh, the intersection from Green Valley Circle and Bristol Parkway is a one-story office building, and then directly to the east across Bristol Parkway are three-story residential buildings in high-density mixed-use, sorry, high, high-density multifamily zoning. Aside from this, uh, the properties immediately to the east, all the other adjoining properties are also in mixed-use, high-density zoning similar to the site itself. As you can see from the site plan, uh, the, the project is arranged with residential units wrapping around a central multi-story parking structure, thereby screening it from view. Uh, the parking structure has three points of access. There's one point of access from Green Valley Circle with a mid-block driveway. Uh, there's a second access that's directly off of Bristol Parkway at a lower level, and then at a further lower level, there's another access to the parking structure from the driveway at the rear of the site. Uh, the project also includes, um, commercial loading area, a covered commercial loading area that has direct access from Green Valley Circle, and although the code does not require any residential loading, the project provides residential loading at several points on the site, including from the driveway of Green Valley Circle, uh, directly off of Bristol Parkway, and at a couple of locations from the driveway at the rear. As you can see from the site plan, there's a fairly comprehensive open space plan, including a publicly accessible Corner Plaza at the intersection of Green Valley Circle and Bristol Parkway, uh, on which there is the community-serving retail fronting. There are also several, uh, courtyard spaces that are resident access only, uh, several of them actually help to break the facade along the furnages on Bristol and Green Valley Circle, and provide access to residents directly to the building, thereby enhancing, uh, the walkability on the site. Lastly, there is also upper-level open spaces at the roof level, uh, both open as well as covered amenities. The project is generally consistent with the mixed-use, high-density zoning standards, the general plan, as well as state density bonus law, and on this side you can see some of the details of the open space provided. Although the code does not require parking, the project does provide significant parking at roughly 1,200 spaces, and you can see the breakdown between residential, commercial, and guest parking, and you can also note from the slide that, uh, the project meets the code requirements and Cal Green requirements for EV parking, as, and it also meets requirements for bike spaces, long-term and short-term. I've covered most of the points in this slide already, but I'll just highlight that the project is dedicating five foot, five feet along the Green Valley Circle frontage, uh, which will help enhance sidewalks. The view on the top left, uh, is from the intersection of Green Valley Circle and Bristol Parkway, uh, and it shows the community-serving retail fronting on the Corner Plaza. Uh, the view on the right is from Bristol Parkway, where you can get a sense of the significant change in grade along Bristol Parkway. Shows you the entrance to the parking structure, as well as the roof-level open space, uh, at the upper level. Um, and at the bottom you see the frontage elevation along Green Valley Circle, where you can get a sense of how the facade gets broken up, uh, the, the portions of the elevation that are in darker tone, uh, are the facade and the, the lightened-tone areas of where the courtyards exist. So this project is seeking for, altogether four approvals from Planning Commission, uh, the first one being site plan review. The project is consistent with all the objective, uh, standards, and it's worth noting that the city cannot disapprove or impose conditions that would render this project unaffordable, um, and the project will be subject to standard conditions of approval. Uh, the second item is the tentative track map, uh, to combine the three existing lots into one ground lot and subdivide into seven airspace lots, uh, in a manner consistent with subdivision regulations and subject to standard conditions. The project is also seeking residential amenities credit. Uh, there have been some questions that we received about this, and the applicant will be speaking further to this issue. Uh, they are seeking open space credit for up to 50% of their Parkland dedication fees. Uh, there is a provision in the code related to, uh, the eligibility of setbacks and open space requirements in the zoning, uh, and the applicant is providing a component of open space that goes above and beyond what the, the zoning requirement is, but they are also indicating that the improvements that they are making to these open spaces go above and beyond the zoning requirements and are seeking eligibility for it. Just as another note, the Parks and Recreation staff have reviewed the request and are in support. Um, the last item is the extended hours of construction. Um, the project is seeking to start construction at 7:00 AM instead of 8:00 AM, and they have estimated, and this is the applicant's estimate, that they could, uh, shave off as much as 10 months, uh, in terms of construction time. Uh, this, um, this would be subject to approval, to conditions of approval, which include a, a construction management plan that's included in the agenda package. The project did complete a environmental analysis with a checklist pursuant to SEQA to demonstrate that the environmental impacts are within the scope of the general plan and zoning code update program environmental impact report, and that no further environmental impact analysis is, is required. The applicant did conduct two hybrid community meetings with a total of 47 participants. Um, notices were mailed for this public hearing to owners and occupants within 500 feet, and, um, prior to 3 o'clock today, we received 19 comments altogether, 17 of which were for the project, one against, and one I would describe as neutral. Uh, I'd like to note a couple of condition modi, modifications that were requested, kind of last minute by the applicant. Uh, this one, um, the standard condition number 36 pertains to gray-water requirements that are in the code that are actually more of a general requirement and are not specifically applicable to this project type, and so staff is recommending deletion of that condition. Additionally, I'd like to note that in the, um, attachment number three, project summary of the, of the, the materials that you received, uh, there was an error in the calculation of the, uh, the estimated amount for the Parkland dedication fee. It should actually read as 6.25 million. Uh, so with that, um, we have a potential motion that, for consideration of these items, um, so that includes, uh, approval of the, of the checklist related to SEQA, um, as well as site plan review tentative track map and extended construction hours. Um, I would make a note that the residential facilities credit issue is something that may, may require reconsideration depending on, on what we hear today.
Right, uh, thank you very much. Um, as is my custom here as chair, when I'm, what I ask is we open the public hearing, then hear from the applicant, members of the public. We do that before we have a lot of substantive questions and comments from the commission, which will then come afterward. So at this point, the question is, are there any, uh, quick clarifying questions that people have about what was, uh, I only had one, and that was, uh, the 36 very-low-income units, what is the AMI threshold for that?
The, um, the, the applicant has not committed to a particular allocation within that. They are going to meet the requirements as stated, uh, in the density bonus law for very-low-income requirements, but that's a question that you could potentially ask the applicant to specify if they are going to meet any particular ranges.
Okay, uh, thank you. All right, so, uh, can we get a motion to open the public hearing, please? And before, as we're doing that, I once again forgotten to ask if, who has met with the applicants. Let's go down, starting with, have you met with the applicant, yes or no?
Yes, I did.
Mr. Jones?
No, I haven't.
Uh, I have?
I have.
Oh, thank you. Uh, that motion to open the whole hearing, has that been made?
Thank you, uh, motion to open the public hearing, moved by Commissioner, by Vice Chair Carter, second by Commissioner Black. Please vote. Thank you, motion passes with four i's.
All right, um, public hearing is open, uh, let's hear from the applicant, please.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. We are excited to be here today to finally present to you guys, um, the commission 6201 residences. Our goal is to transform this underutilized, uh, strip commercial center into exciting and inclusive housing. Uh, my name is Lucium Gattacho, I'm with RCB Equities. My co-developers are Reta Residential, uh, the architect is MVE Partners, as well as the landscape architect is Burton. RCB Equities and Reta have been responsible for a number of developments, multifamily developments across, um, RCBs across the country, uh, Reta Residential mostly in Southern California. Um, we are long-term owners, we are developers, we have a varied portfolio, but substantial about in multifamily development. What we are proposing this evening, as mentioned by Pierre, is 810 market-rate apartments, 36 affordable units. In response to your question, those are at, uh, 50% AMI. Um, we, those, uh, the entire project will have studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms. As pointed out in the city's presentation, the, uh, we have six-to-eight floors, 1,200 off-street parking spaces, a lot of residential amenities that we will mention further on. Um, it's a very highly secure facility and campus with 11,406 community, square feet of commercial retail, a commercial retail that serves the community, which is the purpose for which we are, um, proposing it, 80,000 square foot of common outdoor open space along with 8,400 square feet of publicly accessible open space. In terms of affordability, again, um, we have a mix of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms, for your edification. As you are all aware, um, uh, the existing conditions in the site are not, um, attractive currently. Um, it is a vacant 65,000-square-foot commercial strip center. Um, it was formerly occup, formerly robust, it was occupied by Chase Bank Marshals, had CVS had surface parking, but at this point has fallen into, uh, obsolescence basically, and needs an upgrade, so we are proposing that we demolish the site, um, and build the multifamily project. These are some current condition images. As again pointed out by the city, I feel like my presentation's anticlimactic after yours, but, um, the zoning is mixed-use, high-density. The general plan allows a mixed-use, high-density with, uh, base residential density of 100 units per acre. We are proposing site plan review, vesting tentative track map, and we have complied with SEQA, um, as the project is within the scope of what, what has been previously analyzed in your program EIR. Paul?
I'm gonna turn it over to MVE for the architectural presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Te, commissioners. As I, Lucium, pointed out, Pierre did steal much of our thunder here, but I will try to walk you through some of the more exciting aspects of the architecture. From a site planning and building typology standpoint, we've, we're proposing what's known as a wrap building, um, and this is not only just to meet the, the permitted density at 100 to 220 duces per acre, it also lends itself nicely to dealing with the severe topography change along the site. Um, as you know, or as you may know, the site slopes roughly 20 feet from the top-left portion of the site to the corner of Green Valley and, and Bristol Parkway. Um, so the, the way the wrap building works is we're centrally locating a garage and then wrapping the garage with residential units, so that we're, we're essentially screening the, the visibility of the parking from the public view. Um, the garage acts as sort of this central piece to, to really deal with the grading, so all, the building that's to the left of the garage is essentially eight stories as measured from grade, and then everything to the right of the garage is essentially at six, some portions at seven-story, um, but really favoring lowering the mass along Green Valley and the public streets. Additionally, the wrap building lends itself to this outward engagement approach that we're taking for the building, really opening up the courtyards, um, for the residents to allow visibility out, allow natural light and breezes to get into those interiors portions of the building, as well as Pierre pointed out, from those elevations, uh, incorporating these open courtyards really helps to break down the massing and create, you know, shorter spans of building along, along the, the street frontages there. Um, I think we've pointed out, we have a mix of unit and amenity options, ranging from ground-floor uses at the pedestrian level to an elevated experience on the upper floors and rooftop amenity deck. Um, there's spacious unit layouts, these are open floor plans. We also have townhome configurations at the ground floor with stoops. A lot of these have, uh, patios, uh, balconies that open up to the courtyards and the public street, um, and that those units are ranging, are averaging around 904 square feet per unit. The architecture we're proposing for this is a contemporary California coastal aesthetic. Uh, this emphasizes indoor-outdoor living, clean lines, and use of natural materials. I think this view does a, a great job conveying the idea of, of really bringing the massing down along Green Valley. Um, this view is taken about mid-site along Green Valley. You can see the six-story configuration here with the breaks in the courtyards, really engaging the, the residential community with the, with the public. Another thing to point out is obviously the, the use of the balconies, expanding that living experience from indoor to outdoor, and then you can see the patios at the ground floor really activating the street with those stoops there. Uh, the other view that, that Pierre had presented, uh, showing the, the public open space in the corner, we're looking at really playing up the enhanced materiality here, emphasizing more on stone, on, on brick and wood, um, to really play this up as the, the prime entry for the project. Uh, the other view showing, uh, the ground-floor fitness there along, uh, Bristol Parkway and the pool deck up on the roof. And then I'm gonna be speaking to the landscape portion, um, on behalf of our landscape designer, Burton. Um, I'm, I'm sure you all are aware that Green Valley and Bristol Parkway are, are very well landscaped streets, they have mature trees, um, Fox Hills just in general is just a, a great, a great neighborhood with, with well landscaped streets. streets. We are looking at maintaining some of the existing trees along those streets as feasible as possible, but the landscape architect has incorporated this idea of trying to tie some of the landscape back to more of the geographical aspects of the Southern California region. Case in point is this idea of treating our courtyards as these canyons, sort of these extensions of the landscape into the site. So we're taking some of the mature and native trees that are common to the area and incorporating them within those courtyards. And then on top of that, the trails and pedestrian pathways created network throughout the project that connect all of the different courtyards with the public way, again relating back to some of these notions of canyons and paths through those spaces. A lot of these trails have additional waterways or water features that accompany them to play up the more tranquil aspects of the courtyards. We have options for our amenities within these courtyards. A lot of the activities are more passive in nature, quiet corners with lounge seating. Others provide more recreational areas that are more active in nature. This is a zoom-in on the top-right portion of the plan. You can see the key map on the top right there, just to point out a few components within our courtyards. We obviously have the entry drive there to the north. This courtyard in particular has a pedestrian entry lobby to the bottom portion of that courtyard there, where it's called out as courtyard spa and deck, really to receive pedestrians, residents, and guests alike as they approach along, from Green Valley from the commercial areas. This particular courtyard, as I mentioned, has a water feature, we're incorporating a spa and deck there. The courtyard to the bottom of the plan has more of an active use, open turf putting green, active and passive gathering spaces, and then a canyon dry stream bed, again another water feature that doubles as a water runoff retention area. This view is kind of a hybrid between our ground floor level, the portion on the right there, which is really flanking the common open space, the public open space there, just pointing out some key features there. We're looking at creating or implementing a kind of this open meadow experience that could double and provide for multi-use, maybe, you know, venues, concerts of the like, smaller, smaller in nature. There's a focal pavilion, again active water features. And then we also have a, we're proposing a kid's playground on the more inboard portions of that courtyard. On the roof deck, you can see we have a larger resort-style pool, indoor amenities to the top of that, and then behind that, in a separate courtyard area, we are proposing a wellness courtyard that has indoor spa spaces that work off of that area. Another view back at ground level, this is at the rear of the site, we have a fire lane coming through to provide for fire access. We're utilizing that use to incorporate a dog park and a linear park on the backside of the site. There's also smaller courtyards, again with water features, and a garden where residents can plant herbs and of the like. From a sustainability standpoint, I mentioned the native lands, the use of native landscaping, mature trees. We are looking at solar integration to promote long-term environmental stewardship, compliant, we are intending to be compliant with the city's green building ordinance and CalGreen standards. LED lighting and Energy Star appliances enhance energy efficiency and will be used. High-efficiency boilers, low-flow fixtures, and smart irrigation to reduce water use. I think it was previously mentioned, we have roughly 603 EV stalls for the residents and commercial uses to encourage charging for clean mobility. And then lastly, 244 bicycle spaces. This is broken down between long-term and short-term to support alternative transportation. Public art, the development is investing approximately 2.5 million, that's 1% of the overall project budget, in public art to enrich communal spaces and showcase local talent, enhancing the cultural vibrancy of the neighborhood. We are in the processes of evaluating several proposals. We've shortlisted about seven artists. Some of those will be proposing on actual sculptural art for the project, others will be proposing on what we're calling functional art, whether it be through, you know, artistic expression on gating and fencing or seating, but there's, we're looking at two different types of artwork for the project at this point. And then here are some specific references from each one of those artists, as they may apply to the project. And with that, I'd look to turn it over to our transportation consultant, Eugene Tang.
Good evening, Chair, good evening, Commissioners. Eugene Tang, Gibson Transportation Consulting, working on the transportation aspects of the project. As pointed out earlier, site access to the property, we've got three driveways, one on Green Valley towards the west, closer to Sepulveda, that provides level-one access. There's a second Green Valley Circle driveway towards the east, about mid-block towards Bristol, that provides level-three access, and there is a Bristol Parkway driveway that provides level-two access. Residents can go through all driveways, we've got vertical ramps up and down through the parking structure. Commercial access will be coming in off of driveways two and three, the Green Valley Circle East driveway and the Bristol Parkway driveway into a commercial, commercial parking area, effectively outside of the residential cordon. Parking, so we don't have on-street parking along the project frontages today, and we'll be maintaining that condition. Municipal code does not require parking. We will be providing approximately 1,200 parking spaces. As compared to the prior municipal code, that's about 13% less than what was previously required. And as a part of that overall parking supply, we've got, as noted before, 603 EV spaces, about 121 EV chargers, and then there's also bike parking that Paul had previously highlighted. Relative to transportation elements, the project will be installing a new crosswalk at, crosswalk and curb extensions at Doverwood and Bristol Parkway. We'll also be installing ADA compliant directional ramps at the intersection of Green Valley Circle and Bristol Parkway. We will also be installing protected bike, protected concrete-protected bikeways along the Green Valley Circle and Bristol Parkway frontages, and there will also be a new traffic signal at the intersection of Green Valley Circle and Fox Hills Drive. Project will also be implementing transportation demand management plan elements, and, you know, it's the typical menu of items to help reduce single-vehicle occupancies. And the project also has an estimated 200, no, I'm sorry, $2.75 million mobility fee payment. And?
Obviously, we will have a comprehensive construction management plan. We will include in that a dedicated community liaison. We will provide notice of, in advance of any major construction disruptions or activities. We will try to minimize those disruptions. We have a construction hotline for complaints, and there'll be no on-street construction worker parking. Included in our previous conversations earlier in this PowerPoint, there are a number of project benefits we want to highlight. That includes the housing that we are providing, including the affordable housing that we're very proud of, which includes larger units. For families, we have, there will be job growth as a result of the construction jobs that we will be providing. It's a sustainable environmental design, this entire project, there's been a lot of thought about the sustainability of it, which includes the EV parking, solar, there'll be new protected bike lanes, we will, are excited to be part of the public art program and provide it onsite, and we have publicly accessible open spaces and community-serving ground floor retail, so that people don't have to go to the mall in order to get some basic necessities ideally. We have active street frontages and pedestrian pathways as well. That is, in essence, our presentation. We have, however, received a letter today, I believe you have as well. We wanted to proactively respond to the comments that were in that letter, if you don't mind. So I will ask Dale.
Go ahead. Thank you, Lucium. Good evening, Honorable Commissioners, I'm Dale Goldsmith, I'm a partner with the AGD Law Firm, we're land use and SEQA counsel for the applicant on the project. As Lucium stated this afternoon, the law offices of Mitchell Si submitted a lengthy comment letter on behalf of their client, Southwest Carpenters. Curiously, very little of this letter actually pertains to the project, rather, the letter consists of cookie-cutter arguments that the Si firm has made on many projects throughout the reason, the region. I'd like to provide brief responses to the three substantive points in that letter. First, the letter requests that the planning commission require local hire and skilled workforce provisions to reduce vehicle miles traveled, or VMT, and associated air quality and greenhouse gas, or GHG, impacts. The letter includes over 200 pages of air quality worksheets in support, purportedly in support of this argument. However, these worksheets are based on analysis, a generic analysis done in 2021, and simply have no relevance to the project. As set forth in the SEQA document, expert project-specific studies based on project data and existing conditions show that the project will not result in significant VMT, air quality, or GHG impacts. The SEQA guidelines expressly provide that if impacts are not significant, there is no need for mitigation, nor is there a nexus to require mitigation. Therefore, because impacts are less than significant, no additional mitigation measures, including those suggested in the letter, are required. Moreover, there's no law that requires this privately funded project to have union labor, because that's the essence of what they're asking for, and, nor is there a nexus to impose such a requirement. Nonetheless, the applicant is not ruled out, and is indeed open to having skilled and local labor. However, we're in the entitlement process, it's premature to discuss that. When we don't have plans, specifications, or even a contractor, at the appropriate time, the applicant will reach out to labor to have fruitful, we hope fruitful discussions. The second argument is that there's, there should be a list of, the letter includes a list of COVID-19 measures that the letter is requesting that all construction workers undergo training and certification before being allowed to engage in construction activities in the project. As a preliminary matter, thankfully, the COVID-19 emergency is over. Moreover, SEQA generally is not concerned with effects of the existing environment on the project, and such effects are not treated as changes to the physical environment that need to be analyzed in a SEQA document. As any resurgence in COVID-19 would be an existing condition that might affect the project, i.e. SEQA in reverse, the city did not need to analyze it in the SEQA document. Moreover, in the absence of any applicable methodologies, such an analysis would be speculative and meaningless. Therefore, none of the proposed measures are warranted. Nonetheless, should there be a resurgence of COVID-19 during project construction, the applicant's contractor will be required to adhere to the CDC's workplace guidelines for construction workers, including those specifically tailored for COVID-19. Inheritance to these measures would ensure that the potential health impacts would be less than significant during construction. In addition, the project would need to comply with any city, any and all city and county regulations that would also serve to minimize COVID-19 risk. Finally, the letter claims that the project's SEQA document fails to demonstrate how much of a reduction in health risks the project's mitigation measures would achieve, and that there's no supporting evidence to document that the mitigations would actually result in a reduction of such health risks. That assertion is just plain wrong. Table 8 on page 3-25 of the SEQA document expressly quantifies the reduction from the program mitigation, program EIR mitigation AQ1, and the project-specific mitigation MMA-1, and clearly shows that those measures would reduce health risks to residents, students, and workers to well below the significance threshold. The reductions shown in this table are supported by an expert health risk assessment, or HRA, prepared in accordance with guidance from the South Coast Air Quality Management District and the State Office of Environmental Health Hazards, and the detailed HRA modeling, contrary to the comment, are included in Appendix B to the SEQA document. The letter provides no credible evidence that that expert health risk assessment is wrong, therefore the letter is entirely without merit. Accordingly, we respectfully request that you approve the project. I remain available for any questions you may have. Thank you for your consideration.
Anything further from the applicant at this time? All right. Any quick questions here? All right, members of the public, do we have any?
We have three speakers registered.
All right, three minutes apiece.
Our three speakers are Jay Daddwell, Louise Wexler, and Judy Sherman. Jay, Jay is not registered or is not here. Our next speaker is Louise Wexler. She is not registered or here, and our final speaker is Judy Sherman. Judy, go ahead.
How much time do I have? How much time?
Three minutes.
How much time?
Three minutes.
Okay. Good evening again, my name is Judy Sherman from Fox Hills. Based on your past actions approving mixed-use projects in Fox Hills, this hearing is most likely a formality, as you all have made it very clear that you are just fine with densing up Fox Hills to the max. I am more than happy to see if you people change your reckless approach, but if you keep going like you have with the city council acting like puppets, then we are poised to add almost 3,000 units to the south side of Sauson, which presently has 2,600 units. This mixed-use project is part of that tally. Where is your concern about the environmental impact on the Fox Hill community? Are you all going to address the issue of the addition of car trips with this development? Likely to add at least another 2,000, 3,000 vehicles to the area because of all these projects, these five projects being proposed, this being one of them. At the October 13th city council meeting, Mr. Jones expressed his opposition about adding large amounts of car trips. If Costco expands their gas station, that would increase environmental pollution near the residential areas, especially since they are a priority neighborhood. Fox Hills is a threshold priority neighborhood, and with this amount of development, we will surely become an actual one. In addition, a major reason for the safer Fox Hill plan is to decrease cut-through traffic, which will obviously be nullified if you continue your reckless decisions affecting Fox Hills. Sadly, it is highly likely that this commission will justify creating the added pollution by pointing to some language in their environmental reports. The arrogant behavior of this commission needs to be placed where it belongs, in the garbage. It is time for you to show us that you know the difference between right and wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of our speakers.
All right, thank you. So now it's time for the Commission to deliberate, and we'll be asking some questions of the applicant in that process. Also, just before we start, I know that we have the standard motion, but there's also, I guess, three additional items, the PRCS, the park dedication fees, tentative construction hours, and then this condition 36. So we can also take those in turn later if we don't get to them now, I'll make sure we go through them again. So it's up to you, for yours, Fisher Black.
Thank you for your presentations. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness with which this project was designed, and especially the landscaping. I will have comments later about the park in Luffy. But just for general information, in terms of the community-serving space, I was wondering what factors go into determining how much commercial and retail space to allocate in the Si's project? And also, since it will take a while to fill this number of units, I was wondering when you expect the commercial uses, whether that's a market, a cafe, other services, to be available? You know, does that not come until later on because a certain population is required to support it? Or just interested in a little more detail about the community-serving aspect on the commercial side.
So as you've rightly pointed out, it's a very large project in terms of absorption, and we want this to be a successful project as a result. That is why we've been asking for the vesting track map in order to
That is why we've been asking for the vesting track map in order to be able to split the project potentially into two phases and be able to build in that way so that you can absorb the first 400 units, for example, and then absorb the second set 400 units, um, just depending on market conditions. However, the retail that is proposed, the 11,000 square feet, is in phase one.
All right, um, Commissioner Jones.
Are we just doing question, questions right now? Is that what it is?
Well, we're doing questions and comments, but I, but I just wanted to flag for everything. I know we have to make amendments to the motion to talk about that, so if we don't, if we forget to talk about it, we'll go through it again. That's all.
If we forget to talk about what?
The, the, uh, the PRCS thing, the, well, I will make sure we go through that.
Oh, I understand. Most of my comments are about the parks. Okay, gotcha, okay. I want to ask actually, um, staff about the five-foot dedication. Is all of that going to the sidewalk?
I believe it all is. It's something worth confirming with the applicant on the record, on the record as well.
Okay, great. Yeah, thanks. And I don't think I have any other questions for the applicant, or, um, or, I guess, generally, we're giving general comments. I, sorry. I think the, the project, um, looks great. I think that it, um, I like that it's, it's, you know, architecturally, visually different than what we've seen so far in Fox Hills, um, but it's gonna, um, fit in nicely and provide variety to the neighborhood. And, um, uh, you know, I like the, the townhomes with the stoops. I feel like that's, that's what we're seeing too, and that's a good, um, it's gonna be part of, I think, the neighborhood feel there, um, going forward. And I have, I have comments on the parkland stuff, too. Um, the, the 36 units of very low affordable housing is very important, um, a huge plus. Um, I'm glad you were able to include that. And other, other comments I can give later, but thanks.
Oh, just, um, one second. Would the applicant like to confirm about the five-foot dedication on the record?
Sure.
It is exclusively for the widening of the sidewalks.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Vice Chair Carter?
I think it looks great. And I, I support it. I appreciate your time walking me through it earlier. Um, at first I'd, I, you know what? I, I think it looks good, and I look forward to seeing it happen. Thank you.
All right, and, uh, you know, my comments, at least on the first part of it, I'm very pleased to see, uh, some of the aspects of this project. Uh, the stoop units, I agree with Mr. Jones. It's wonderful to see those, you know, the stoop units. The message of those is this is a safe neighborhood, right? That's, you know, so instead of walling the, the building off from the community, the message of those units is it should be good to walk around here, it'd be safe to walk around here. Those are, um, I believe when I spoke with the applicant, many of those are the three-bedroom units. I've seen nodding from the, the applicant's side. Uh, in other words, the, the largest family-oriented units are actually the ones with the best street access, and that is a real statement about, uh, safety in the neighborhood. At least, that's what it seems to me. Also, very pleased to see the, uh, the variable income units there. There's a lot of them, that's 36. Um, and AMI 50, we don't see a lot going down that far. So that is, that is particularly great to see. I did want to ask you, I know that I looked through the documentation and saw about the car trips, but, uh, one of the commentators asked about them. Is there a VMT analysis here about additional car trips caused by the, uh, and where, where would I find that?
The VMT analysis would be in the transportation analysis, but from that analysis, this project screens out from further VMT, so there is no VMT impact due to location with proximity to the Culver City, um, Culver City Transit Center, like the Westfield Mall.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Let's take a look at this.
Sorry, turn my microphone back on. Let's take a look at the, uh, let's do this. Let's, let's take, um, since I see there's, uh, consensus about the project itself, let's take a motion as a second to approve the project as it is, and then discuss the additional conditions, the, the PRCS, the, the construction hours, and, um, the condition removal separately.
Chair, we haven't closed the public comment.
Oh, we might want to do that, yes. Um, let's take that motion first. Thank you very much. Motion to close public hearing.
Who moved?
I need some technical help.
Oh, what, what?
I did something on the screen, and so I'm not seeing the agenda or anything.
I can, I can go over. I'll take the, the motion, and then I'll run over. Um, who moved for, to close a public comment?
Did anybody up here actually personally move?
I, um, I moved.
Thank you.
And I seconded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner, Vice Chair Carter, second by Commissioner Jones. Please vote. And Commissioner Black? Thank you. Motion passes with four ayes.
Okay, so, as I said, let's open our debate with the motion second as written here, and then we'll, we'll move on to the remainder of the items that have to be discussed. So, um, the motion that we're looking for is that the, it's this. Have the planning commission adopt resolution number 25, 2025 dot dash P oh one two, number one, approving a SEQA checklist pursuant to SEQA guidelines 15168, determining that the environmental effects of the operation are within the scope of the Culver City General Plan 2045 and zoning code update, certified programmatic environmental impact report, and two, approving site plan review, comma tentative track map, facility, recreation facilities credit against parkland dedication requirements, and extended construction hours for project P 2025 dash oh oh five oh dash SPR slash TTM, subject to conditions of approval as stated in the resolution. And of course, we'll discuss amendments to that. So, that's a motion. I have that motion, and then we'll give a second.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Black, second by Chairman Day.
All right, now we have that. Let's, um, start with Commissioner Black, talk about the, the, in Lufy's.
So I'd like to address the 50% credit being requested. According to the staff report, uh, the parkland dedication requirement is calculated at 211,000 some square feet, and so the credit being requested is for, um, 106,000 square feet of onsite open space and amenities. Of that, 8,460 is publicly accessible open space, and the rest are areas that are available only to residents and their guests. I think the landscaping is gorgeous, and there's a, a great range of uses. But the whole point of public parks is that they're available to the public. And I certainly agree that some of the open space and recreation facilities can be considered equivalent to a park, but I question the 50%, given that only 8% of the space for which the credit's being requested is actually open to the public. And, yes, it's very important that there are 5% very low-income units reserved, but that means that 95% of the residents here will be upper-income people. And it seems to me like some of these wonderful amenities are things that the developer would need to, uh, provide anyway in order to be competitive with similar apartment complexes. Culver City now has a wonderful long-range parks plan, and we're really relying, um, on the park in Lufy's to implement some of it, uh, including improvements to Fox Hills Park itself. The general plan specifies eight types of parks, and courtyards don't look like they fit into any of these categories. On the other hand, the linear park, I think, um, does qualify easily, even though it's only open to residents. The pool area is really sexy, but I don't see it meeting our overall community pool needs. Our overutilized plunge is in demand for lap swimming and classes, and we need a children's pool. I mean, it would be amazing if the developer could include two pools and make one of them open to the public on a scheduled basis for lap swimming, but I can't justify taking away funds from our public parks for a resort-style pool that's only open to residents, uh, high-income residents and their guests. So, um, I think that a number significantly smaller than 50% as a credit would be appropriate. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Thanks. Um, I wonder if, so, in the municipal code, it says that, um, we can't consider yard setbacks and other open areas that are required to be maintained by zoning and building regulations. Is that, do we have a number of how much of that is, or do we not? Okay.
Yes. The project is actually providing, and the applicant can verify this, 33,971 square feet of onsite open space that's over and above the zoning requirement.
Okay.
That said, they are seeking to, to claim that in addition to meeting the open space requirement per zoning, that they're providing amenities and improvements on, in that open space that goes above and beyond zoning. Uh, and so you may need to listen to that argument there, but it's also subject to a question from the city attorney as to whether that argument passes muster with regard to the, the code requirement.
I'll, I'll jump in there. So the code gives the planning commission the discretion to determine whether it's in the public interest to determine that, um, a percentage of the parkland dedication requirement is satisfied by the proposed development. So it's within the planning commission's discretion as to up to 50% of the credit, um, what percentage is appropriate based on the, the parkland and amenities being provided by the applicant.
But, but does the next provision say we can't, in doing that, we can't consider, we can only consider the 33,000 square feet?
It, it does, but if you look at section B above it, um, there's nothing in this saying that, you know, because 30,000 is only, say, 15%
Right.
That only, you can only apply a 15% credit. You, you have discretion to apply a larger credit, um, but you should only be considering the, um, the open space. It's not a yard, a setback, or an open area required to be maintained by our minimum standards.
So we could say, if, like, let's say they only provided 100 square feet extra, and it was really good. It was worth 50%. We could, in our discretion, say it's in the public interest, or, um, uh, yeah, whether it's in the public interest.
That's correct.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. I, I, I feel, overall, I feel similarly to, to, I almost said Professor Black, Commissioner Black, um, that it, I mean, the, the intent of the, of this section is, I think, that it literally says we're private open space, even if it's not, you know, it, it, here there is public open space, they want us to, that, that we're, we're kind of counting towards it, too, but it's really like, the, the municipal code says you can have private open space. It is lessening the burden on the city park system, so, um, so, you know, they don't need to, to, um, have as much, yeah, either parkland or this, or this in Lufy. But it is, I think, our, yeah, our discretion to say whether it's in the public interest. And I think, again, that, that the, um, the quality of, of the open space is very high. I think it's kind of impressive. I think I, I like read the staff report, and I was skeptical, and then I looked in more and was like, yeah, that is actually really cool. Like, just the, I think the variety of it, um, the creativity, and then, in, in addition to that, the, um, just like the overall consistency of like, you know, the landscaping and the, the outlook of the whole project, I feel like it's, it's really impressive. But I don't, but I don't think it's in the public interest to, to grant a 50% dedication, or, sorry, uh, uh, to credit 50%. I, I would be willing to do something, 15%, I don't know, but, um, but, but definitely not, not 50%. I'll see what other commissioners think.
Vice Chair Carter, thoughts?
Hi, yes. I also had concerns about this issue, um, but from what I've gathered is that it's stand, standard, I think, because I, I might be wrong, but, correct me if I'm wrong, please. But from what I gather, this is what has been established if, to get housing built, if, if we have X number of units that do this, then we do this. So I'm glad we're having the discussion about how, how much, but I don't want to, then I got worried because I don't want to kill the project. So, because I, I do think it's a good, strong project with a lot of benefits. So, um, I'm going to go with staff on this one. I mean, I know the city does have budget, budget problems, and I am really glad we're having this conversation, and maybe there is, um, more there to discuss. So thank you for bringing it up, and, um, and thank you for all the reports.
I guess just one thing I think might be a good reminder is that the Parks and Rec staff, you know, reviewed this, and their feeling was similar to what you alluded to, that when there's private amenities, that creates, they, they can use those amenities instead of going to the public, and that is why they were comfortable with this approach, for the record.
And it, well, one of the points that came up in the conversations with the Parks Department was the appreciation for the fact that the publicly accessible component would be owned and operated by the, the owner, because that does represent a reduction in burden to the Parks Department, which is often a significant issue.
Thank you. My general inclination is to follow staff's recommendation on this, if it's coming from the Parks Department, because they, uh, I would assume they understand, uh, even better than we do, what, what to do with the parkland and occasion fees. That being, that, and, you know, let's, let's ask the applicant, I know you have some response to make.
Again, for the record, Dale Goldsmith, uh, you know, valid points made by all the commissioners. This has been thoroughly vetted by staff. It's my understanding that this is not an uncommon credit, and public interest is, I think, factors into a couple of things. One is, is quantity. The, as, as staff said, the amount of open space is about 40% more than what's required by code. That's a significant increase. But as importantly to Commissioner Jones' comment, the quality is very good, and I would, I would urge you to consider that. You want to encourage developers to have great open space in the project, because if people are recreating onsite, they're not going and having a greater demand in the parks. That's exactly what this credit's about. The whole concept of an in-lufy is to create the facilities, but yet, if there's no demand, then you don't have to create the facilities, which is very hard to do because there's limited space. And, and the quality, I think, obviously, the, the plans, I think, show how good the quality is, but also, one thing that didn't come out, and we probably should have mentioned that, is the 8,400 square feet of publicly accessible, privately maintained open space is not just going to be a lawn or a cactus garden. It's going to be improved with a water feature, with a pavilion, and programmed. And that programming is going to be a real amenity, we believe, for not only the residents of the, of the project, but the community as large. It could include yoga classes, exercise classes. The pavilion could have, uh, plays, uh, music, but maybe not amplified music, because that might upset people, poetry slams. upset people, poetry slams, and also perhaps a totlot. So this is a -- it's a blank canvas. We would be pleased to work with your staff and with key community stakeholders to come up with a programming concept, which, again, goes to your point, Commissioner Jones, of quality, that will really make this a jewel in the city's crown. Thank you.
Well, let's circle back to this for a moment, just to make sure that we've taken care of the other items before we get to what may be the one contested item here. I could be wrong. Extended construction hours. Any discussion about the request for extended construction hours on weekdays?
I 100% support it.
All right. So I think that's going to -- that'll be part of what we do. I can see nodding heads all around. And then there was a request to delete Condition 36. That was a standard condition that I guess staff wanted to remove here. Is that right?
That is correct. The specific condition pertains to graywater requirements for low-rise buildings, and it's a generic standard condition, and it's not strictly applicable to this building because of its height.
Okay. Any discussion with the commission about that request? All right. So it looks like we are prepared to approve the project with extended construction hours and with the deletion of that condition. We just need to resolve the issue of the in lieu parkland fee.
I don't know how to amend the motion or make a motion to amend, or what -- how do I do that? If I want to say I propose that we say do a 15% credit instead of a 50% credit?
Well, you can make a motion to amend the motion on the floor. We have an unusual situation with four people here.
Yeah.
And I think that the resolution is we need three. And that -- and by saying we need three, that avoids me having to figure out -- right, because I can either -- if you make the motion and it fails, well, then you can make a substitute motion. You could redo it all over again and have the tie work the other way, and it's not helping. So I think we're going to need an agreement of three, which we would normally need.
I -- in response to some of the applicant's comments, I think that, you know, we've seen projects with great open space that haven't requested this credit. Now, those projects didn't have extra open space. Now, I don't think that necessarily we want to do a one-to-one percentage-wise, you know, you provide this much extra, so therefore this is the percent. But I -- that's actually -- that's kind of how it was presented, how it was -- I don't know if it was applied for that. That's just how staff presented it, was that, like, they're giving this much open space, and this is how much, you know, they would have to provide if they were providing parkland, and it's 50%. They definitely didn't meet that. And maybe they're saying it's really great, but I think that we're seeing great, great parkland without -- from applicants that aren't -- that aren't great parkland. We're seeing great open space that fulfills a park's recreation use that without requesting a credit. I don't think I've seen a project yet that's requested a credit before us here. And I'm not going to say that. Don't hold me to that. I looked back at, like, five, and I couldn't find one. And I do want to incentivize it, and I think that giving a 15% credit here will incentivize them, will incentivize other projects to provide, you know, more open space than is required. I think that already there's incentives to provide great open space in Fox Hills, because we're seeing that in the projects that are before us.
Wish her luck.
I realize that the Ivy Station development is different because there were a lot of components to it. I looked that up, and I think that I believe they did get a 50% credit, but, you know, they're provided that large open green space. It seems like a large percentage of what they've provided is available to the public. And I mean, I think I really want this project to move forward, and I think the quality of the amenities is really, really high. It's just that most of them are not available to the public.
And, I mean, I know I kind of went in the other direction of that earlier, but I think that even though it's talking about, you know, private open space, that when we're thinking about public use, like, obviously, that must have been -- I would feel like that's more of a slam dunk to see the -- sorry, the public interest. It's much easier to see the public interest in a case like the Ivy Station, and especially in, like, retrospect, how much use that gets.
I mean, I would want to just point out that, you know, we've been looking at project after project here in Fox Hills, and this is one of the best-looking, I think, the best-looking open space that I've seen in the last couple of years. I know that's just a subjective view, but I suppose that's what I have to bring to the table. I understand some of the concern here, because it, you know, in the first instance, you're wondering, well, gee, why would I give any credit for non-public space? And then, of course, the argument, you know, made well is that actually you're giving a credit for sort of relief of the burden off of the public space, of the public parks, and that's perfectly sensible. I also am a little sensitive to what Vice Chair Carter has brought forward, that the, you know, we have a valuable, affordable housing component to this project. We have a project that is, I think, unusually beautiful for what it's bringing, and I don't want to disturb the expectations, especially if PRC has staff, which is actually the one foregoing the funds, seem fine with this. So I would prefer to have the 50% that they've requested. If not, I think it should be much higher than the 15. Maybe looking closer to a third.
I did see a legal document that came in shortly before the meeting started that we can't -- it would be illegal for us to make a requirement that killed the project, if I am understanding that right.
I don't think that -- this doesn't seem like it would kill the project.
Okay.
I mean--
Normally, I am 100% about holding developers to do -- to give back to the community, and I really do feel like, in general, it's their responsibility, and that plenty of money is being made, and that there's -- Culver City has a lot to offer. I just -- because I do think the project looks good, I just -- I didn't want to be personally responsible for, like, killing this project. But I -- it is important to have the conversation, so that's all.
Well, I think Chairman Menthie has proposed a compromise.
It's still -- that sounds really high to me. What -- can we -- so the staff report has this $43 million number that I believe is wrong. What's the real number?
The real number is 6.25 million. Apologize for that error.
Can you tell us, just remind us in the theater gallery, which number we're talking about?
Thank you.
The parkland dedication fee estimation is approximately 6.25 million for this project.
And that's -- and they're asking to pay 50% less than that?
Correct. Yes.
So 3.25.
3.125, yes.
3.125, yeah. Better math. Thank you.
So 15% would be a discount of 937,500, and 33% would be a discount of
If I may, just for reference--
2,620,000.
Sorry. If I may, just for reference, the amount of extra open space above and beyond the square footage that zoning calls for computes to about 16% of the parkland dedication fee requirement.
Okay.
And what they're asking for 50% is really just for the amenities, et cetera, that they're placing upon those spaces.
On the attachment for -- I don't have here what the exact title of it is, but there's a table that says, you know, open space proposed and total project open space, and then the proposed credit. And it wasn't related to the excess above zoning. It was related to the calculation of parks per resident and then going from there. And so that's what I was basing my comments on.
Just to help think through that, the same page that you're referring to, Commissioner, identifies the total requirement per the zoning code, and it also identifies the amount of open space provided. The amount required by the zoning code is 84,600 square feet. The amount required -- the amount provided is 118,571 square feet, and that difference computes to about 33,000.
But they base the 50% on 50% of--
50% of the parkland dedication requirement, which is 211,000
Right.
Approximately, which is the maximum they can ask for.
Well, right.
So we need to find a way to get to three. And just a thought to throw out here while we're doing this is, and I think this is sort of where I was going before, if approximately 15% of the square footage is available for public use, and we're also recognizing that there is a benefit for the relief from the private use, you can sort of double that and get to about 30%. And a 30% dedication would probably make sense in this case. So I'm going to amend the -- I'm going to move to amend the motion to give a 30% dedication and see if I can get three. A second?
I have a question. The 2 million on art, is that a requirement from the city?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I was wondering if we could pull from there and move that around, but, okay.
And it needs to go through the Cultural Affairs Commission
Okay.
Too, as to whether, you know, architecturally interesting fencing is acceptable. I mean, there's a whole process for that.
Right. They don't ask us that question, thank goodness. All right. So I'm going to amend the motion that was made. I'm going to move to amend the motion to reduce the request from 15 -- 50% to 30%. Is there a second for that? Do we do it orally?
I second that.
All right. So that's a motion to amend. We'll now--
Moved by Chairman Menthie, seconded by Vice Chair Carter. Please vote.
That did not succeed. Is there another proposal on the table?
I proposed 20%. So before I said 15%, but our planners told me that actually, if we were just saying, you know, what's the percentage, if we take the square footage that they provided that's extra and took that as a percentage of what they would have to provide in parkland, it's 16%, you said. So I was lowballing it already, and we have talked about how great it is. I say let's give them 20% credit. So that would be my motion.
I will tell you, if you go to 25, you can have a third vote from here.
Okay. Let's go to 25. So I moved to amend this motion to provide a 25% credit instead of a 50% credit.
Do we have a second for that? All right.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Vice Chair Carter. Please vote. Motion passes with four ayes.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table. It has been seconded. It has been amended. And so I believe we're now ready to call the question on that motion. Time to vote.
Sure. So that -- let me just --
Oh.
Second. So it was originally moved by Commissioner Black, correct, and seconded by Chairman Menthie.
I believe so, yes.
Yes. All right. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with four ayes.
Okay. I believe that concludes item PH 2. Do we have any further public comment for items not on the agenda?
We do not have any, Chair.
All right. Any items from members, staff? I know I have one. I understand that some of our planning department was in Monterey and may have received yet another award for our general plan. If you could speak to that, I would appreciate that.
Yes, we got the Daniel Burnham Award for Comprehensive Plan. It's one of the highest awards that the California American Planning Association gives out. Troy, the advanced planning manager, was there to accept it on our behalf, and we're very excited about another award.
Congratulations to all of you. All right. Anything else from staff?
Just to let you know, the next -- at our next meeting, we are going to have a heavy agenda. We will have the 11-469 Jefferson Hotel that we continued. We will have a study session for the Hayden Track specific plan. We will have two different zoning code updates that deal with some requirements that we need for our housing element and some other state legislation to support housing. And we will have 5757 Uplander Way, Fox Hills mixed-use project.
All right. Okay. Thank you. So I'm now ready for a motion to adjourn.
Sorry, who moved?
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. And a second?
That was me.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Moved by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Vice Chair Carter. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with four ayes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned at 8:26 PM.